Today is Monday October twenty seventh, two zero twenty five. It is actually six thirty P M. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilwoman Braziano.
Present.
Councilwoman Ritz. Councilwoman Trafficanti. Councilwoman Baziri. Councilwoman Vice President Haroyan. Councilwoman Andujar.
Present.
Councilwoman President Wal.
Here.
Thank you. Um, now we're gonna move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience I would like to make public comment on docketed items only? She be me too.
My name is Laura Almet. Can you guys hear me? Laura Almagno. I live on two eighty nine No What Avenue in Cranston.
Now this, are you commenting on the finance committee meeting ma'am or the city?
Um, it may be unrelated, but I think it would probably go through your committee. I called and went through a few different people at City Hall and they said to come for public comment.
Yeah, so public comment would be for the next meeting. That's when you could just talk about anything you want.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so so this one is just about um, one thing on the docket, about a kind um, a letter of engagement that we're about to take.
Okay.
Don't worry. I got some snacks here for you if you want.
Oh, okay. So it is.
Early, very early.
Oh, okay. All right. It's like half hour.
I'll make a signal for you. Tom, is there anyone online that would like to make public comment?
There is no public comment online.
Okay, at this time I would like to close public comment. Moving on to new matters before the committee. Um, consideration of letter of engagement between the City of Cranston, City Council and Michael Marcelo Esquire. Um, Louis Risbos Biscard. And Smith L L P for the services as counsel attorney and litigation counsel for the city council for the term ending January fourth, two zero twenty seven. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Any second. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, all right. Let's see. Mr. President.
Let's not to belabor it. I was pleased um, last week, it looks like last week when we appointed uh, Attorney Marcelo, uh, counsel attorney. Um, if we look over the contract, the uh, letter of engagement is very similar to the one we had prior to this when we engaged uh, Attorney Marcelo as our attorney for the open meetings uh, litigation. Um, so I'm certainly gonna be in support of this tonight. I'm very pleased to welcome him aboard.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilwoman Braziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Trafficanti. Councilwoman Andujar.
Yes.
Councilwoman President Wal.
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time I would like to ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Ayes have it. Motion, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good evening. And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to this regular city council meeting. Tonight would be October 27, 2025. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Pastor Magraziano.
Present.
Pastor Nanduhar.
Present.
Pastor Ritz.
Present.
Pastor Traficanti.
Present.
Pastor Mavaziri. Pastor Campiano.
Present.
Pastor Bonano.
Present.
Pastor Vice President Royan. Pastor President Wall.
Here. Thank you. Next item of business, I'd ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening. First order of business will be citations, and the first citation we're going to give out will be a citation of congratulations for the Cranston West Little League, 11 to 12-year-olds, girls softball. for the Cranston West Little League 11- to 12-year-olds' girls softball team and all-state champions. This letter's citation is a congratulations, and it reads as follows: "To the Cranston West Little League 11- to 12-year-old girls softball team, all-state champions, and congratulations for the Cranston City Council." Here, would you like to say something before I call it in? I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Graziano.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, and good evening, council members. Before I begin, I just want to share why that I continue to bring Cranston's youth teams before this council. We are incredibly fortunate to live in a community with overflowing with talent, hard-working young people, and recognizing their accomplishments in a small but meaningful ways is part of what makes Cranston so special. These moments remind us that volunteers, coaches, parents, and mentors are quietly shaping our future, leaders, one practice and one game at a time. And we're all better for it. Tonight, I want to highlight the achievement of an outstanding group of athletes, the CLCF Cranston West All-Star 12-U Softball Team. These girls had an unforgettable season, winning the Rhode Island State Tournament in a convincing fashion. That victory earned them the right to compete in Bristol, Connecticut, representing our city and our state on one of the biggest stages for youth sports. But what stands out most just isn't the wins. It's the way that they carry themselves. Sports uniquely teaches young women to lead with confidence, to communicate under pressure, and to turn every high and low into fuel for growth. These athletes have already learned resilience, has already learned that reaches far beyond the diamond: resilience, accountability, and the courage to step up when the moment is the biggest. And what a moment it was, playing on ESPN+ underneath the bright lights streamed across the country. They represented Cranston with pride, grit, and undeniable class, and inspired the next generation of young female athletes watching from home. So tonight, let's applaud to the CLCF Cranston West softball team, not only for their achievement, but showing all of us exactly what strong women are capable of when given the stage and support to lead. Congratulations to the players, their coaches, and their families. You have made all of Cranston proud, and this is only the beginning.
So if you would, as your name is called, please come up here, line up here. I'm going to call the names of the ladies on the team, as well as the coaches. The first would be Eva Palumbo. Eva Taveras. My eyes are very bad. Seraphina Sweeney. Cleo Wittenberger. Mia Biara. Leila Murphy. I'll go slower. Jackie Newberry. Mackenzie Taveria. Mackenzie. Nina Graziano. Emma. Ricky. Olivia Cole. And Emma Gomez. And also, coaches Patrick Sweeney. Joseph Murphy. And Derek Viera. Congratulations on a job well done. Chris, you're coming up for the next one, right? You're representing. That's okay. Okay, the next group of citations will be a citation of congratulations for the Cranston East Boys Volleyball Team, D1 State Champions. Would you like to say a few words, Councilwoman Banano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to ask Councilwoman Trafficante to come up, join us. This gives me great, or gives us, great pleasure to welcome these next guests here to chambers this evening. As a proud board member of the Cranston East Alumni Association, joined by my fellow alumni on the council, Councilwoman Trafficante and Councilwoman Graziano. I'm a member of the Class of 2002. Councilwoman Graziano, the Class of 99, and we won't mention Trafs. We'll just leave it alone. But all of us collectively as a council, especially these Cranston East graduates as well, wish the Cranston High School East Boys Volleyball Team congratulations on an extraordinary and historic achievement. On June 8, 2025, the mighty Thunderbolts captured their first-ever state championship in boys volleyball for Cranston East, defeating North Kingston in a thrilling 3-2 match that kept fans on the edge of their seats, winning 16-14 in the final set. The road to the title was marked by determination, skill, and heart. And after sweeping Bishop Hendrick in 3-0 in the semifinals, you carried that momentum into the championship, showing resilience and teamwork that exemplify the very best of Thunderbolt pride. What makes this moment even more special is that it comes during Cranston East's centennial celebration, 100 years of excellence, tradition, and community spirit. That's the reason that I and Councilwoman Graziano are sporting our centennial sweaters tonight. To bring home a state championship in such a milestone year adds another proud chapter to the school's remarkable history. At a time like this, and for celebrations like this, I recall the words of a great poet. His name was Bill Parcells. He actually wasn't a poet, he was a coach. And Coach Parcells, after the Giants won the Super Bowl and Super Bowl XXI, said, "For the rest of your life, nobody can take it away. Nobody can ever tell you that you didn't do it because you did it." So congratulations. On behalf of the entire city, congratulations to the players, coaches, and supporters who made this historic victory possible. Your hard work and dedication have not only earned you a championship banner that will hang in the building next door for a very, very long time, but have inspired the entire Cranston community. Go Bolts, congratulations, boys.
All right, if you would, please step up here when I call your name, and hopefully I pronounce it correctly. Charles Pensei? No? Okay. Caleb Zum. All right, Jordan Frizone? Jordan? Darian Peterson? Marquis Sasan? Andrew, looks like Andrew Viet. He's not here. Viet, all right. Dennis Dixon? Not here. Sammy Rivera? Sean Dolan? Robert Daniels? Not here. Alex Diaz-Negron? Not here. Awad? I am going to have a hard time with this one. Is it? Yes. Is he here? He's not here. Ethan Nev, or Nev? Tafa Nidoi? Not here. Kristen Rivera? Not here. Jonathan Quira? Kira? And Kevin, yes. And also, congratulations to the coaches, head coach Jamal Diggs. Kristen Ward. Nick Chee. Is any of the coaches here? But also Ron Lee. Congratulations on a job well done. You two, you're okay. Okay. Our next citation would be a citation of congratulations to the library director, Ed Garcia. He has been the recipient of the Rhode Island Center for the Book, 2025 Page Turner Award. Thank you, congratulations to Garcia, and a few words from Councilwoman Banano.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Why don't we have Mr. Garcia come up, and we can all stare at him awkwardly? It's fitting tonight that tonight's recognition will go to a librarian, because the recognition on the council floor, Director Garcia, is overdue. Came up with that myself. It's a library joke. It's a library joke. It's our great honor to recognize Edward Garcia, Director of Cranston Public Library, as this year's Page Turner Award recipient. The Page Turner Award is given by the Rhode Island Center for the Book to a librarian or educator who has made a significant contribution to their mission by inspiring the love of reading throughout our state. Since his appointment as Cranston's library director in 2012, Ed has led the Cranston Public Library with vision, innovation, and an unwavering belief in the power of libraries to strengthen our communities. Under his leadership, Cranston's library system has earned national acclaim, including the Library-Aware Community Award and the Jerry Klein Community Impact Prize, becoming a model for excellence and civic engagement. A proud graduate of the University of Rhode Island, Ed's career began right here in Cranston, where he first served as an intern in the Cranston library system. Over the years, his passion for literacy, access, and public service has earned him recognition across the nation. From library journal's mover and shaker to the New England Library Association's Emerson-Greenaway Award for distinguished service. Beyond his achievements, Ed has been a tireless advocate for the freedom to read, championing libraries at both the state and national levels through his leadership with the Rhode Island Libraries Association and the American Library Association. As Rhode Island Center for the Books Director Kate Lenz shared, quote, "Ed was the only person we considered for this year's award. His leadership and unwavering commitment to the freedom to read have been truly exceptional." Ed has stated himself, quote, "Libraries are the pillars of our democracy, places where everyone can freely explore ideas and stories that shape who we are. This is more important now than it ever has been." I and my children are frequent guests at Cranston Public Library. I always have a book that I'm in the middle of, and by the way, this is overdue, I want to give it back to you. If you want to take that, thank you very much. I know there's no fines anymore, but that one's been out so long, there might be. In all seriousness, we can clearly see Ed's dedication and his direction flourish when we walk into the library. He has enabled many generations to enjoy reading, even if only for a few minutes of quiet in an utterly noisy world. Congratulations, Ed, on this well-deserved honor. Your work continues to inspire readers, empower our community, and uphold the very ideals that make libraries essential to our democracy. On behalf of all my colleagues on the Cranston City Council, and on behalf of a grateful and proud city, the entire city council presents this citation to our truly tremendous library director, Ed Garcia, to honor his very recent achievement as the Page Turner of the Year. Congratulations.
Right. The next item of business will be the approval of minutes. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to take the minutes as a block.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made, and second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Andujar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Trafficante.
Yes.
Councilman Campiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman President Wall.
Yes. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve of that block of minutes.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, there being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Andujar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ritz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Trafficante.
Yes.
Councilman Campiano.
Yes.
Councilman Banano.
Yes.
Councilwoman President Wall.
Yes. Next item of business will be public comment. This will be public comment on docketed matters only. If you have anything to say about something on the docket this evening, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes. Is there anybody in the chambers this evening who would like to make public comment on docketed matters? Seeing none. Tom, is there anyone online?
Drake Patton.
Drake Patton. Can you hear me, Ms. Patton?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Drake Patton, 684 Natick Avenue. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I want to congratulate Ed Garcia. That was very well deserved and wonderful to recognize his work for the city. A couple items I'd like to comment on. One is the proposed ordinance around the housing court. I was not able to attend the most recent ordinance meeting, but I did watch the meeting and have been looking for data supporting the need for this particular vehicle. I haven't found any. I guess I'm seeking clarification about the fiscal note as well, which lists expenses but does not mention income, which is unusual. And additionally, I guess I wonder whether the Housing Commission has been consulted on this. Do they think this is important? Are we modeling this on other cities, and if so, why? And I guess overall, my big question is why we're not focusing on strengthening our existing code enforcement and inspections division, which I think we can all agree has really faced challenges, understaffing, unresolved repeat offenses that are not dealt with, lack of inspections overall. And I guess in my mind, strengthening these mechanisms may be more effective than creating a new tool whose necessity is kind of uncertain. Again, I could be missing data. So I do understand it's a pilot program, but I would like to know if there are supportive data, and if so, can those be shared with the public moving forward? I have two other items briefly. I know these are going to be referred to committee, but I'd like to say something tonight. I'm wondering about the data to support the erasure of Title VIII, chapters 8, 4, 9, and 850. Is this being replaced with something else? I'm certainly delighted to see a focus on housing, and I recognize Councilman Anduhar's interest, given that this is the world he works in. But for those of us in the lay public, removing tools that support residents in making good decisions or protects them in some way to be treated fairly is confusing. This may not be the 2008 mortgage crisis, but we are in a housing crisis, and we don't know what's coming next. So again, I guess I would encourage us to be data-driven and to provide a rationale when this comes to the ordinance committee. And then lastly, regarding the proposed ordinance to remove newspaper notice for special meetings, that's very confusing to me. I would love to know the motivation behind this. Certainly, many residents use the internet, but this is not a universal, and we have a population that is elderly and may not be as comfortable with that tool, and others who do not have the privilege of a home computer. And I believe personally, we need more engagement, not less. In my own neighborhood, I get frequent calls to explain the meetings, the schedule, how the committees work, and so on. Not everyone is fluent in the city's website, and they do get confused. So I'm extremely opposed to the removal of any public access tool. And frankly, I also think that retaining this kind of notice is actually a good governor on this body, because special meetings should not be occurring unless there is an urgency to them. And we've seen, recently seen the use of special meetings without clear explanation as why they need to be special meetings as opposed to being taken up in the regular business. So I really encourage you to keep the print notification. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, is anyone else online who would like to make public comment? Tracy, is that you? Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. President. It's me. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to make public comment?
If, if you'd allow, I could just give brief explanation on the couple of ordinance amendments, or if you'd rather wait until the time that they come before ordinance committee, I can do it at that time as well.
I would, I would generally wait till it comes before ordinance committee because.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I wanted you to know I'm here and I, and I could, you know.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Is anyone else on?
I see no other public comment.
So at this time, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to resolutions. The first is going to be a resolution recognizing Italian-American Heritage Month. This is sponsored by Councilman Banano, Councilman Campapiano, Councilman Ritz, and Councilman Trafficanti. Is there, we'll start with the motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Anyone want to second that?
Mayor Trafficanti, second.
Okay, that's made in second. Any discussion? I believe. Councilman Banano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken a lot tonight, so I'm going to keep it short, but the ordinance is, excuse me, the resolution is presented as October is Italian-American Recognition Month, Italian-American Heritage Month throughout the country, and especially here in Rhode Island, and even more especially in Cranston, where approximately 35% of the population has some tie to Italian heritage. The most of any other ethnic group in our city, according to the 2020 census. We found as though it was appropriate to also designate it here as Italian-American Heritage Month in the city of Cranston. As we all know, in addition to many other cultures, Italian-Americans have left their lasting mark on the city of Cranston. You know, one only has to think of the Knightsville area where my mother's family settled, as well as, you know, other places throughout the city, and we must re sort of, sort of re-recognize our sister relationship with Etri Italy because so many people from that area settled here in the United States at the turn of the century. Cranston honors the values diversity and heritage inclusion, and they recognize the story of all cultures. But for this month, I am hopeful that my colleagues will join me in designating this month Italian-American Heritage Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Would anyone else, Councilwoman Graziano?
Thank you, Council President. I would love to be added to this resolution.
That's okay to the sponsors. That's okay with me. Councilman Ritz?
This is a co-sponsor. I just want to make a few additional comments. You know, just following Councilman Banano, you know, Italian-Americans being one of them, like, my last name is Rizzo by right, you know, the tremendous achievements they've made to the city, the state, the country, business, education, it goes on and on. So I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this. You know, it helps to celebrate the rich heritage and culture throughout Cranston. And I'm sure my other peers here, whoever isn't on it, I think it's just Andy, that would be added on to it, so.
Andy, would you like to make?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. As someone who grew up in Federal Hill, it would be an honor for me if I could be added to this resolution.
And I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this resolution. Certainly can recognize the great accomplishments the Italian-Americans have made to our, our city, our state, and certainly our nation. Anyone else? I see Councilman Campapiano's hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I am truly proud to be a sponsor of this resolution, especially here in Cranston. There's, there's a couple of Italian restaurants here in Cranston, I think. I think most of us do enjoy going there, and I myself have been known to make a couple of pizzas from now on then. So I'm proud to be a sponsor. It's proud of my talent, however. Just thank you for everybody else for being a sponsor here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. If there is no further comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Moving right along, the next resolution is in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This was sponsored by Councilman Banano, Councilman Campapiano, and myself. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I see Councilman Campapiano's hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Breast cancer awareness month shouldn't be one month. It should be every month. Please be proactive, be aggressive, and get checked every year. Breast cancer affects so many families, including our own council family. It rips moms who, who are the heart and souls of families far too soon. Early detection saves lives. My mother is a survivor, and I thank God every single day for that. But my family lost a very dear friend, and she left behind three young children, and it's a pain that I think about every day. So please, let's this resolution for Cranston to recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month as a reminder to every woman we loved. Excuse me, I get emotional when it comes to this subject. To get loved, get checked. Don't wait. Talk about it. Remind people you love. Encourage them to schedule a screening. Unlike other awareness months, this one can truly save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Would anyone else like to make a comment? I see Councilwoman Graziano.
Thank you. I appreciate that this is brought up. I too have family members who are survivors. I will read their names aloud. Mary Ryan, Margery Ryan, and Morgan Graziano are all breast cancer survivors and are, Mary Ryan passed away of old age, but the other two are still here, and they're doing fabulous. So I appreciate this, and I'd love to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilman Ritz?
I would just wanted to, my wife is a breast cancer survivor, so I also want to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilman Trafficanti?
May I be added to the resolution as well because my family has suffered from cancer? In fact, my entire family was wiped out because of cancers.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Anduhar?
I would like to be added as well, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And Councilman Banano, I saw your hand up.
I just, thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Campapiano and I were writing this resolution, I just wanted to commend him. He was very passionate about the, when we had the conversation about it. I just wanted to mention that, you know, he is, he's right. Breast cancer, or any type of cancer really, is something that affects everyone. And the reason why he and I sort of thought about it and put it forward, in addition to the council president, was because some, some people very close to us had been afflicted by it, and I, I just want to mention that my mother, Jane Spirito, is a breast cancer survivor. She, very strong woman. A lot of you know her. She was a teacher at Cranston East for a long time, 33 years. And she is a survivor of breast cancer. However, my father's mother was a person who was afflicted with breast cancer, and she died at the age of 45. While my father was just 12. So while I never got to know my mother's, my father's mother, I know that her absence has had an impact on my life without, without her being around. I'm sure that had an impact on my dad, which then in turn had an impact on, on myself. So with today's technology and today's medical advancement, I know it's probably uncomfortable. I don't know. I haven't gone through it, but I encourage everybody, get screened. You know, do what you have to do. Go to the doctor, and early detection is still the biggest way to defend. So any type of cancer, not just breast cancer. So if you're out there, you know, err on the side of caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And before I take the roll, I'm proud to be a sponsor. This is such a terrible disease, as been said by my colleagues, that affects so many families, and awareness and early detection is such a key. So I'm certainly proud to be part of this sponsor. And if nothing more, I'm going to ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to committee reports. The first report is a report from the Claims Committee. Unfortunately, this evening, Councilwoman Vizery could not be here. The claims meeting was canceled on October the 6th, and the paid claims report has been included in your packets, and there's nothing further to report on the Claims Committee this evening. Next would be a report from the chair. Actually, tonight it would be the, the vice chair of the Safety Services and License, License Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Anduhar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, we did have meetings on October 6th and on, on the 16th. There are no actions, no votes, so just like to move on.
Okay. Also, the, the next up, I also believe is going to be a report from Councilman Anduhar as the chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Finance Committee did meet on October 6th. We have a few things on the agenda, so the first one is a resolution authorizing the real estate tax abatements, which is in the package. I urge for passage.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti? Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes.
Next up, we have another resolution authorizing the tangible tax abatement, which is in your package. I urge for passage.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And that is a motion to approve? All right, so, right, that is a motion approved, Councilman?
Motion to approve.
Is that a motion approved?
Yes.
I just, when I said, I just wanted to make sure it was emotionally approved. And there was a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz? Pasma Trafficanti? Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes.
Next up, we have Ordinance 9-25-07, Amending the City of Cranston 25, 26 Municipal Budget. This is for the Assistant Fire Chief's Salary. This was sponsored by the mayor. We urge, recommend for passage.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Cosmo Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes.
Next up, we have from the special meeting held on October 27th. This is a consideration of the letter of engagement between our new counsel attorney, Michael Marcello Esquire, and his firm Lewis Briefs Post, Biscard, and Smith LP. Urge for passage.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
As motion, is there a second? Did I hear a second? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Councilmen. Moving on to Public Works, we'll hear a report from Councilwoman Graziano and the chairman of the chairperson, rather, of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Committee meeting was held on October 16th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and at this time, there's no new items to report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And right back to Councilman Anduhar as chairman of the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet a lot. A lot of this stuff will be going back to the ordinance committee, but I want to start, state for the record. Let's move into, from the October 16th meeting, 2025, Ordinance 08-25-01, Ordinance and Amendment of Title II, Chapter 40, of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinances 2005, entitled Municipal Court, sponsored by myself and more people. I would ask for a motion to send back to ordinance committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? No discussion. Clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Pasma Banano?
Yes.
Pasma President Wall?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have Ordinance 08-25-02, in Amendment of Title VIII, Chapter 8.36, Section 50 of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinances 2005, entitled Duty of Owner Upon Receipt of Notice, sponsored by council, our council president, Wall, Councilman Banano, recommend for approval, for passage.
Is there, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Cosmo Graziano?
Yes.
Pasman Anduhar?
Yes.
Pasma Ritz?
Yes.
Pasma Trafficanti?
Yes.
Pasma Campiano?
Yes.
Cosmo Banano?
Yes.
Cosmo President Wall?
Yes.
Next up, we have Ordinance 09-25-01, in Amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32, Section 600 of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinances 2005, entitled Two-Hour Parking. between six A M. and six P M. on Saturdays and Sundays, sponsored by our very own Councilwoman Graziano and Councilman Campagnano, recommend for passage.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second, second? Second, is any discussion? Okay, there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes.
Thank you. For the next couple of series, I will introduce it, but I will have my counterpart here, Councilman Councilman Banano speak on the ordinances. So we're moving on to Ordinance zero-nine-two-five dash oh-two, in Amendment of, Amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Twelve, Section one-thirty of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinance since two thousand and five entitled Right Turns at Certain Red Lights. I would let Councilman Banano speak on this.
All right, so I just, I want to make sure we do this correctly. I want to amend it. So do we need enough, a motion to amend? First, or do we need a motion to send it back to committee first? How, what's the best way to do it?
It was my, well, I don't know, who did we speak of? Solicitor, you want to speak on this matter? It is Ordinance oh-nine-two-five-oh-two, is that correct? That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's first we deal with, yeah. Not. Oops, sorry, sorry, Nick. This is under new business on the calendar, so since it's not properly before, you can just withdraw it at this point.
All right, so it, no, it's coming out of, through the, through the chair, it's coming out of committee. So what?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is not, I'm looking at a different page. I apologize. These are, are reports out of the committee. Yes, this does need to be sent back to the committee. So you'd need a motion to, to re-refer it back to the committee.
So I'm, I'll make a motion to refer it back to the Ordinance Committee.
So moved. Council, Mayor Trafficante, second motion.
All right, motion has been made. Councilman Banano, just restate that for me, that's to?
Yeah, to send it back to the Ordinance Committee.
So moved.
There was a motion and there's a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, I just want to explain really fast, tell, let's take a second. In concert with the recommendation from the traffic engineer, what I'm going to suggest when it gets back to Ordinance Committee is that we remove the hours. So the new language at that point would read intersection of Cranston Street at Gansett Avenue, southbound onto Cranston Street, period. The traffic engineer feels that, and I tend to agree, and I think we did discuss it briefly at the, at the meeting, Councilman Campagnano brought it up, that the hours of restriction would make it more confusing and more difficult to enforce. So more confusing for drivers, more difficult to enforce to the police, and just to make it a straight-up, no right turn on red would be easier for everybody. So that's, that's what we're going to try to do here. So that's the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? I see none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante? Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes.
Next up, we have Ordinance zero-nine dash two-five dash zero-three, in Amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Thirty-two, Section forty of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinance since two thousand and five entitled No Parking on Certain Streets Generally, sponsored by Councilman Banano and our Council President Wall. I would let, I would pass the mic over now to Councilman Banano to speak on it.
For almost the same reason, to clean up some language here. The traffic engineer would like us to basically change some of the wording. The, the effect will be the same, but he would like to change some of the wording on this. So for that reason, I make a motion to send this one back to ordinance as well.
So moved.
So I'm going to look for a motion to re-refer this to the Ordinance Committee.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second? Heard a second, I believe. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz? Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes.
Moving on to Ordinance zero-nine-two-five dash oh-four, in Amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Thirty-two, Section forty of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinance since two thousand and five entitled No Parking on Certain Streets Generally, sponsored by Councilman Banano and our Council President Wall. I would like to pass the mic over now to Councilman Banano.
So for the exact same reason, the traffic engineer would like some language clarification on these. So for that reason, I make a motion to refer them back to the Ordinance Committee.
Motion to send this back to the Ordinance Committee.
A motion to re-refer it to Ordinance Committee. There is a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes.
Moving on to Ordinance zero-nine-two-five dash oh-five, in Amendment of Title Ten, Chapter Thirty-two, Section five hundred of the City of Cranston Code of Ordinance since two thousand and five entitled One-Hour Parking Generally, sponsored by Councilman Banano and Council President Wall. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Councilman Banano.
So at the suggestion again of the traffic engineer, we would like to clean up some language and I'll make a motion to send this back to the Ordinance Committee.
Motion to send this back to the Ordinance Committee.
There is a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz? Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes.
Just for clarification, that, I know, I, I think I heard somebody ask, is it the same ordinance? It's, it's doing two different things, but we're going to clean it up and do it the right, a little bit less confusing. So that's kind of the point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you, Councilman, for all your efforts. This was yeoman's work on this, this matter. I know it's been trying to some extent. It's greatly appreciated. Moving on to public comment for undocketed items. Is there anyone in chamber who would like to speak on undocketed items? Please step up, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you format.
Hi, my name is Laura Almagno. Do I need to give my address?
Please do.
A L M A G N O. And my address is two-eight-nine Noelwood Avenue. That's with a K. So I am here in, in asking all of you to please consider funding for an animal control officer after hours. There have been more than one incidences that I've been involved with. Most recently, Wednesday, I was walking my dog around quarter to seven and I came across a cat who was injured, mouth bleeding on the side, on a sidewalk at the base of someone's driveway. So when I spoke with the police officer, reluctantly, somebody came and, you know, I was told they're not allowed to transport animals, which, which is fine. And when I did offer, you know, part of their contract, they can't transport animals. So I said, okay, the humane thing to do, I'll care, I'll bring the animal to the animal shelter if someone would meet me there and unlock it, which they were, they agreed to do. I ended up bringing it to the hospital, but that's, that's one instance. And a, and a few notes about that are, you know, it was seven o'clock at night. The animal control officer would have been on duty thirteen hours later. I live on a busy street in a busy neighborhood. There's a bus stop right, right there, almost in front of the house where I found the cat. You know? It was, it's, you know, Cranston's website boasts as being one of the best cities to live in according to U S News and World Report. And has a commitment for enhancing the quality of life through exceptional public services. Beautiful parks and a vibrant local economy has continued to pay dividends. And I agree, which is why I think this is a social, this is a service that should be part of living in this city. Another example, a couple summers ago, there was a beautiful yellow lab, stray yellow lab, running around, who found his way to my backyard and in my, through, in my house, ate all my dogs. It was just wild, beautiful dog. And when I called about that, I was told, well, there's no one on right now, no animal control officer. Someone can come tomorrow. So, you know, I was hiding my ten-pound dog at the time. It was an unrealistic ask. I had, I did have the dog on leash. I went outside and I did reunite the person, the dog with, with this human. But, you know, in terms of safety, I happened to come across a friendly dog, but it is a dangerous thing. You can't ask a resident of the city to take in a stray dog, transport, you know, a deceased cat and you know, provide services that are the city's responsibility. Additionally, Rhode Island General Law four thirteen dash one states that municipalities are responsible for impound and stray and dangerous animals. Can result in animal suffering, property damage, liability exposure for the city. I mean, I could go through more. I don't want to take up too much time, but really, I'm just pleading to you from a humane perspective. And the, it, it seems like a cost-effective option. Another municipality that, that does this in Rhode Island is Bristol. If you call, they have a twenty-four-seven on-call officer. Many do what Cranston does on-call via police, but the responses that I've gotten are not i-ideal. We, I can't contractually take this. Can you keep the dog overnight? I mean, no. One last thing, I am not a, a perfect pet owner myself. My dog got loose. And when I called the city, the police officer said, oh, you can pick up your dog tomorrow. It's two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon at the pound. And that was unacceptable to me. He's ten, he has arthritis. And I, I, you know, I had to ask several times and advocate to please contact the animal officer who had just left the front of my house because one of my neighbors told me. And I just, I have to say, she was wonderful. And the follow-through, so not only I went to the animal shelter, she took my dog to Ocean State because they didn't know that he was already on many arthritis medications. And the next day at work, I got a follow-up, like, you know, she had confirmed with my vet that the dog was well cared for. She was wonderful. I, I mean.
Ms. Almagno, can I ask you to sum it up now?
Please consider funding either another full-time officer for, you know, after our third shift or at least on-call. And I'm willing to help whatever you guys need to advocate for this.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in chamber who would like to make public comment this evening on undocketed items? I see none. Tom, is anyone online?
Drake Patton? Good evening again, Drake Patton, six-eighty-four Natick Avenue.
Good evening.
One year ago this month, almost to the date, there was a fire at the lawn beauticians on Natick Avenue. An entire section of the neighborhood was evacuated in the middle of the night for fear that their houses were going to catch fire. Fortunately for them, as I believe you know, at this point, the fire went east onto the highway. And fortunately for drivers, two ninety-five was not busy at that time, and the police were able to shut down the highway while the fire was contained by our fire department, who did a great job, and at least two other responding community fire departments. No one was hurt that night. We are very lucky. Had the wind gone in any other direction, property and possibly lives, including those of our first responders, may have been taken. Yet, here we are, one year later, with no responsibility demanded from the business owner, who at this very moment is busy filling the property with new piles, including one that is at least four stories high. And I can tell you this because I went and stood next to it this weekend at the border with one of the neighbors. At the last Safety Services meeting, the clerk was instructed to place this matter on the agenda for tonight. It is not on the agenda. And I'm speaking on behalf of Carol Cooney, who represents her direct neighbors on Evil Lane, which was the neighborhood evacuated, as well as for my neighbors where I am on Natick. But I promised to speak about this for, for Carol in her absence because she and I and our neighbors don't understand how it is possible that this has yet to be resolved. And I also wonder personally why the council and the city are content with having the business owners give everyone a huge middle finger because that is essentially what is happening. State law is quite clear on what a farm is, which is what the owner claims he has, and quite clear on what it is not. Similarly, state law is quite clear on what defines a composting facility, which the owner sometimes says he is and sometimes says he isn't, and how those composting facilities must be permitted at the state and local levels. There's no gray area. And finally, our own local zoning is quite clear about what is and is not permitted in the neighborhood. At that recent committee meeting, Councilwoman Graziano correctly stated that the owner's claims of grandfathering can easily be checked through aerials. Indeed, those aerials were provided to the formal council president, former council president, even before the fire last year because of the risk I knew the business was running. Recently, that same research, updated to reflect the fire, was shared with the law office of the city. There is no reason that we cannot take care of this situation. And I would say to you that one year later, we are at risk for another fire. All you need to do is drive by. And frankly, if there is another fire, the winds may not give you the benefit this time. So I am asking again, please handle this. As a layperson, if I can do the research and send it to the city, I know the city can do a better job because they're not laypersons. They are actually professionals. So I am asking you, on behalf of the community, please protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, is anyone else online who would like to make public comment on undocketed items?
There is no other public comment.
So at this time, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to election appointment of city officials. First up would be the reappointment of Raymond Koya to the Juvenile Hearing Board for the term of December first two thousand twenty-five through December first, two thousand twenty-eight. This was requested by the Council Vice President Haroyan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes. Next item would be the reappointment of Ralph Bakari to the Juvenile Hearing Board as Member Six. He was formerly Alternate Two, replacing Judith Abay for the term of December first, two thousand twenty-five through December first, two thousand twenty-eight. This was requested by Council Vice President Haroyan. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante?
Yes.
Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes. Next would be the reappointment of Catherine Crowley to the Juvenile Hearing Board as Alternate Number One for the term of December first, two thousand twenty-five through December first, two thousand twenty-six, as requested by Council Vice President Haroyan. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficante? Councilman Campagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Council President Wall?
Yes. Moving right along to executive communications, the legal, legal expense analysis for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-five through October first, two thousand, I'm sorry, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five wasn't included in your packets. There is no votes. This is an informational matter. If any council members have any questions, I solicit, two solicitors are here this evening. There are any questions, I'm sure they'll answer them. I see none, so we'll move right on. Next item of business would be the introduction of new business. The first thing we're going to attend to is a consideration of an amendment of the City Council rules for the term of January sixth, two thousand twenty-five through January fourth, fourth, two thousand twenty-seven, and the approval of a resolution amending the Council. and the approval of a resolution amending the council rules, um, for the term of January sixth, the term of January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, through January fourth, two thousand twenty-seven. Um, basically, I'll speak to it, it is an amendment of one word on page two, under, uh, Section Three regarding what Monday we're going to meet. I have had conversation with members of the council, um, it changes, uh, the word fourth, reading, um, the council shall meet on the fourth Monday each month, to the council shall meet on the third Monday each month. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve amendment.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficanti? Councilman Campiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilman President Wall?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next for new business, I am going to, um, withdraw ordinance ten twenty-five oh one, and withdraw ordinance ten twenty-five oh two. Do I need to make a motion to do that? I can just withdraw it, uh, okay, just withdraw. So those two items are going to be withdrawn, and I'm going to look for a motion to take the rest of new business, which will run from ten twenty-five oh three, through through claims, there, the remainder of new business, I'm going to look to take those as a block. Is there a motion?
Motion to take the agenda as a block.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, any discussion? Alright, there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano? Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz?
Yes.
Councilman Trafficanti?
Yes.
Councilman Campiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilman President Wall?
Yes, and then I'm going to look for a motion to take the blocked items and, uh, refer them to the appropriate committees.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Graziano?
Yes.
Councilman Andujar?
Yes.
Councilman Ritz? Councilman Trafficanti? Councilman Campiano?
Yes.
Councilman Banano?
Yes.
Councilman President Wall?
Yes. Um, the next two items are under informational items only, there will be no action. Um, this is just a communication, um, from Judith Abate.